So we've got several items on the agenda. Why don't we go, we'll start with regional issues, emerging issues in community and economic development. Is that, is this part of that, what you have queued up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Get off for your own business.
Sure, sure. Under emerging issues in community and economic development, let me start with Chip Vincent, Administrator for CED and Council President, Corbin, and Council members. Angie and I are here to discuss two issues. The first one that's in front of you is upcoming issues, and we put together a fairly comprehensive, complete PowerPoint here to discuss the issues in front of us with respect to legalized marijuana in the state of Washington and how the city might move forward here based on the information that we provide you. And then, secondly, I just wanted to take a brief bit of time to discuss the reorganization happening in CED and discuss its budgetary impacts with the council in advance of it coming forward to you in an ordinance as part of the budget update.
Very good.
So with that, I will introduce Angie.
Good evening, Angie Mathias. I'm a planner here with the city, and I'm going to give my best efforts here. I'm not a lawyer, and I'm only really giving you sort of a high-level presentation on it. What I would be most concerned with is the land uses and how we might implement this in terms of the planning perspective, zoning and such. But it's always informational and helpful to get some other background. So what I intend to cover this evening is to give you a brief background on legalized marijuana in Washington State, how some of those rules play out, but by no means covering all of the state rules, to show you a map for how some of those things might affect the city. A municipal comparison, we looked at some peer jurisdictions to see what they have been doing with this legalization, talk about smoking in public places, and then show you our recommendation. So by way of some background, legalized marijuana in the state of Washington, there's actually sort of two ways that it's broken out. There's medical marijuana, which was, came through with Initiative 692, and I have more on that coming up, and then recreational, which is I-502, also another initiative. Under medical marijuana, there's collective gardens and dispensaries was how people obtained marijuana. Dispensaries were essentially sort of made by the legislature. For a while, they were something that people were using, but the legislature made changes so that that's no longer a viable way to obtain marijuana anymore under a medical permit. Collective gardens also, the legislature or the Liquor Control Board has proposed some rules that have made some changes to that, and I'll talk more about that. Under recreational marijuana, the State Liquor Control Board has been charged with making rules and issuing these licenses, and so they will be issuing licenses for retail, producer, and processor. And they will begin issuing those licenses in December, very shortly here, actually. And so to give you a little bit more on all of that, Initiative 692, this is medical marijuana, was actually passed in 1998. So we've been working with this for quite a while here in Washington State. It allows qualified patients or designated providers to grow and process marijuana, but it is not legal under Initiative 692 to buy or sell marijuana. As I've mentioned earlier, dispensaries are no longer legally viable due to changes that the legislature made. It says that now you have to wait 15 days between providing marijuana to different patients. So people were doing it just like on a daily or an hourly type basis where they're saying, "Okay, come in," or "Now you're a patient, now you're qualified," and it would just churn people. Now they're saying you have to wait 15 days to do that, and so dispensaries are really not a viable way to manage that anymore.
And can I stop here and ask, when did that rule change take effect?
It was fairly recently. I don't think it was 2013, but I think it was 2012. Larry, do you, off the top of your head? It's not super recently, but not a long time ago.
Did it predate the passing of the law for?
Five oh two?
Yeah, five oh two.
I think they sort of, I don't think so.
They just coincidentally were on that same frame?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then collective gardens now are basically the only way that folks can acquire. And as I mentioned earlier, collective gardens, the, so the, as part of what the legislature did, they asked, with five oh two passing, they asked the State Liquor Control Board to then sort of look at medical marijuana. And because we're, they've, it's a highly regulated environment for recreational marijuana, and it's becoming more apparent that medical marijuana is not necessarily very well-regulated, and so the legislature asked for some draft rules to be released. The State Liquor Control Board, actually in partnership with, I believe it's the Department of Health and then another body, drafted these rules, and they released them just recently, October 21st. As part of that, they proposed that collective gardens be eliminated. So effectively, what they're saying is that if you have a medical marijuana card, that you need to obtain your marijuana then through this retail marketplace. So there still would be this licensing for individuals, but it will function also within the parameters of this recreational marijuana. However, the legislature would be required to take action, and so we don't know. It's up to them. If they don't pass anything, then we would continue with collective gardens. If they do pass something, then they could also modify the rules as they've been proposed.
Ed?
So some of these dispensaries that are out there now, are they eligible to become retail locations?
Not necessarily. So I will cover that, and they would, if they were to, they would have to completely comply with all of the rules and regulations that would be in place for recreational marijuana. So recreational marijuana was passed as Initiative 502, just in 2012. It legalized possession, so it really is truly recreational. It's not medical anymore. It's not under the caveat of, "I went, I have a medical condition that requires this." It's just saying, if you're 21 or over, then you can be in possession of marijuana. It also created a licensing system for producers, processors, and retailers. The rules say that you cannot have all three of those licenses. However, you could be a producer and a processor at the same time. So you can't be a retailer and a producer/processor, but you could be both a producer and a processor. They created these rules and regulations and first proposed the rules in summer of 2013, said, "Hey, here's our first crack at it. We've spent a lot of time working on it, but here's our first draft." In September, they revised those rules and then have released those again. In October, they adopted those rules, and they become effective November 16th, so just in a little while here, a couple of weeks. Those rules are fully effective. And then November 18th, the board will begin accepting applications for all three of these things. And they have all sorts of rules about how these things will work, and they're very, very detailed. I'm not going to cover all of those rules by any, any means, but just to give you an example, the licensees and financiers are required to pass a background check. They need to show that they don't have certain types of convictions. There's a whole point system for how that works. If they get so many points, then they, they can't have either one of the, they can't get a license for that. Employees must have ID badges, and they must be on display at all times, so when you come in, you can see that they have these IDs. The, any of these three must, this applies for all three of them, by the way. Any of them, they must have insurance. I believe it's up for $1 million worth of coverage. They have to have a security alarm system in place. They also have, have to have a recording surveillance system with cameras and such. And then there's also a pretty elaborate tracking system, so they're tracking it from the point, before it's even had water added or anything, just from the seed all the way to the point of sale, and then when it's transported from the processing place to a point of retail sales, it has to be tracked that entire way. There's a whole slew of other rules that Larry probably could go through for quite some time, but just to give you an example of what some of those rules are, that it's quite extensive.
All rules that the state has developed?
Correct. The State Liquor Control Board, that's who was charged with it. And they would also then be charged with making sure that anybody that applied for these things would comply with those rules. What I'm most interested in are the locational rules for how these places would be able to locate. So the State Liquor Control Board has said that they are required to be 1,000 feet from any elementary or secondary school, playground, and they've defined all of these things. And so playground implies that there's some sort of improvement there, that there's equipment and that sort of thing. It's not just a publicly-owned piece of property, recreation center or facility, childcare center, public park, public transit center, library, or game arcade. And so what we have done is...
Now, Don had a question.
Yeah, sorry.
You can stand at the same side, because it has to do with the 1,000-foot buffer. Now, how's that buffer being measured? My understanding is, is that it was, as you could walk, the path you would take is what the State Liquor Control Board was saying, but then the feds said, "No, you need to make it..."
As the crow flies, basically.
As the crow flies, so you know what that's, which point?
We're back onto the "as the crow flies."
It says "as the crow flies."
That's correct, yes.
Great question to this map.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so this is obviously too small for you to look at on your, on your screens, but you've been provided with a copy so that you can look at it more closely. And it's really just a first blush, trying our best to interpret the definitions as provided by the State Liquor Control Board. But to be really honest, we don't know quite what it would be like to, to work with these rules and to see what that's going to mean for us. And these are buffers from all of those uses. So from a producer, so from somebody that wants to grow marijuana, from a processor, somebody that wants to process it and, and get it processed and packaged and ready to be delivered to a retail location, as well as for retail locations. So, and it's hard to say where things might fit in, but you can see that there's a lot of space in the valley, some along, some of our commercial corridors, Northeast Fourth and Sunset, and then in sort of north end of our downtown, up towards Lake Washington, there's quite a few pockets as well, and then down towards Cascade. So for all of them, one of the big things that the, we have not had the opportunity to work through is that when we go, when somebody comes in and says, "Hey, I want to be a marijuana producer. Where can I locate as, in the city?" We don't have in our use table something that says marijuana producer. We can't go in there and say, "Oh, look, you can be in the R1 zone and our industrial light zone." And we haven't, we hadn't conceived of this when we developed our code, and so one of the things that we haven't done is made a determination as to what these things would be. So would a producer, does that mean agriculture? One of the things, and we'll talk about this with comparing jurisdictions, some jurisdictions have said that if you're, even if you're a producer, you have to be an entirely indoor business. There's a lot of lights that are associated with it, as well as a lot of, I understand, chemicals and that sort of thing, and it's not really like a farm in terms of what we would imagine a producer or agriculture to be. So some jurisdictions are not calling it agriculture, they're calling it an industrial use. Well, what's appropriate for Renton? What do we want to call it? Processors, same thing. They're using a lot of things to make, to move things through and all of that. So is that manufacturing? Is that the closest thing based on our definitions? Is that a comparable use for what we're comfortable with here in Renton? And then for retail, do we just call it retail sales? Is that our most comfortable definition, or do we want to try to categorize it as something else and/or maybe add some other locational criteria or other restrictions on things and try to be more specific about where things would be allowed? Also, just as a side note, the State Liquor Control Board has set numbers, so this is only for retail. They have not, there's no limit to the number of producers and processors that can be located anywhere. We could have, you know, as many as our, as we can, our zoning will allow, or as many as people choose to locate here. But as far as retail operations, the state has said that there can only be so many, and it's based on population and some other things that they, I don't know the magic behind it. But for the state, there will be 334 retail locations, up to that many. I suppose that there may not be that many, but up to that many. For King County, there will be up to 61, and for Renton, that means that we will have up to three retail locations. But that, again, just as a reminder, that does not include producers and processors. That's only for retail.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Angie, what, have we figured out a process since there's going to be a limitation on the number of retail outlets that we can have in our city? Is there some kind of formula or process that's going to be used to make those determinations?
So as I said, we haven't, the first thing is that Renton has not said that retail, retail marijuana sales is equal to anything. So we don't know for sure if someone said, "I want to locate this in this location." We can't say quite yet that we're, that, sure, that makes sense based on our zoning. Additionally, even if we had that in place, folks have to apply for a license with the state, and then the state will review it, the Liquor Control Board will review it for that 1,000-foot criteria to make sure that they have an adequate plan for how they're going to handle all of those other things that they say that they need to handle, and that they'll do the background checks and all of those sorts of things. So the one level is that there's, there's Renton, and our big, our biggest control is our business licenses. So we would issue them a business license, and that's something that the State Liquor Control Board would require as well, is that business license from them.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Brier?
Just a quick question. From what I have understood as far as getting the license through the state, you actually have to have your location determined? You can't apply without...
Yeah, they need to be able to say, "This is where we have it," or "Where we're proposing to have it," and then the state will review all of that, those things. Additionally, the municipalities will be notified and have the opportunity to comment. So if we were to adopt additional criteria, such as saying that, some jurisdictions have said you need to also be 1,000 feet away from another retail operation. And so if that were something that Renton were to have in place, then we could comment to the State Liquor Control Board and say, "You know what? There's already one in that location. We've adopted these additional restrictions, and we would ask that you not allow this secondary location based on these rules that we've adopted." And so that would be another opportunity for us to make comment to the state.
Angie? It just seems to me that the state could just get way ahead of us on where we decide with our zoning, how we're going to, to take a look at this. So, and maybe I'm getting down to the end, but are we talking a moratorium so that we don't have somebody come in and have a license, you know, come in and say, "I've already decided I'm having it here," and we're saying, "We haven't made a decision whether you can." It just seems to me that we need to do a moratorium.
Yeah.
Councilmember Person and Councilmember Taylor, to your questions, we're actually working towards a point where we have a recommendation. There are, as you suggest, there are a myriad of different alternatives in terms of how we would achieve compliance under the law, but most significantly, what we want to talk about is how do we effectively engage the public in terms of the choice moving forward from the city? So we are working towards that point where we do have a recommendation for you tonight. And it is, and not to jump ahead, but it is a moratorium.
Okay.
Not to cut to the chase, but...
And there's a draft resolution if you need it.
Mr. Chair? So is that for all three, producers, processors, and retail? So if, if a company came and said, "We just bought a warehouse down in the valley, and we want to grow in there," you'd say...
We're, go ahead.
Grow all the dahlias you would like, but don't grow marijuana.
I see. Okay. Okay.
So one of the things that we like to do in, in planning is to see what other jurisdictions are doing with things and give us an idea of what may work or what's not working, and just see how things function in other places. So we looked at Bellevue, Everett, Issaquah, Kent, King County, Kirkland, Redmond, Seattle, Shoreline, Tacoma, and Tuaqua. And when I first looked at this as, by way of an example, these were different than, I most recently looked at them last week, and so people are changing things quickly and adopting some different regulations. Again, this is much too small to read on the slide, but you've been hopefully provided with them. This is this one on recreational marijuana. And just to give you some overview, Bellevue, Kirkland, and Tuaqua have adopted rules formally. Issaquah, King County, Seattle, and Tacoma have all still just proposed rules. They're not formally adopted yet. Everett and Redmond have adopted interim rules. I can't remember, I think they're six months and a year. I think they varied on each one. And so those are sort of trying the rules on for size to see how they work for them. Kent has officially banned them and is sticking to that. Shoreline is still developing their rules and regulations, and Tuaqua just, had a moratorium that they just recently lifted and have formally adopted rules. Some of the examples, growing and processing only allowed in industrial zones, is Bellevue, Everett, Issaquah, Kirkland, Seattle, Tacoma, and Tuaqua. So they're not, basically just King County is saying that it's sort of this outdoor agricultural use. Most jurisdictions that we've looked at tend to be calling it sort of an industrial manufacturing-type land use. Everett, Tacoma, and Tuaqua have said not within 1,000 feet of, and this is, not all of them have said these three things, but by example, they've set other locational parameters saying not within 1,000 feet of residential uses, not within 1,000 feet, Everett actually said not within 1,000 feet of drug rehabilitation centers and, and/or other retailers. So they're putting on these other criteria for them. And then Tacoma has added that retail is not allowed to have drive-through, which is sort of an interesting...
I hadn't thought of that.
So then, we, it's always important to remember that there's two different ways there's, that marijuana is legalized right now. There's also medical marijuana, and we looked at the same jurisdictions to see what they're doing. And so Issaquah, Shoreline, and Tacoma have formally adopted rules. King County has just proposed rules. There's adopted interim rules in Bellevue, so has Redmond, but Redmond's interim rules is that they're prohibited. All collective gardens are prohibited, so they're calling that interim, but really that's effectively a moratorium or a ban to me. Kent, again, has banned it, banned the collective gardens. Everett and Tuaqua have moratoriums on their collective gardens, and so far Kirkland has actually, they've reviewed it, but they've elected to not make any, they've not done anything with it. They believe that what they have in place is effective enough for managing medical marijuana and collective gardens. So, so other examples, collective gardens are allowed only indoors in Bellevue, Issaquah, and Tacoma. So again, not allowing those collective gardens to be outdoors, sort of our typical picture of gardens. In Issaquah, they add an additional layer of review, saying that you must have a city-issued license, a collective garden safety license. And then in Issaquah, Shoreline, and Bellevue, they've added the layer of not within 1,000 feet of another garden. And some jurisdictions have really sort of tried to mirror the State Liquor Control Board criteria, saying not within 1,000 feet of a school, not within 1,000 feet of a park and those sorts of things, because those things, to be honest, are not in place for medical marijuana and collective gardens. So they've tried to sort of mirror those similar regulations. So for all marijuana land use, by the city of Renton, the classification of, as I said, for how these land uses might be applied, since we don't have it in our zoning land use table, I can't go and say, "Well, why yes, here is marijuana retailer." We haven't considered what we would like to classify those things at. We haven't taken the time to really process and work through that. We also haven't considered what other regulations might be appropriate for the city of Renton. What's, what would be the best thing for us? It hasn't been reviewed by our Planning Commission, and it hasn't been presented for a public hearing, and it hasn't been, had a formal recommendation made to you as council or been fully considered and reviewed by council. Additionally, some consideration needs to be given to smoking in public places. Public places, smoking in public places is against the law, but really that's just about buildings and vehicles. Local jurisdictions can make a rule about smoking in public places being parks. A number of jurisdictions have done that, and this has kind of also come forward through legalization of marijuana, some level of concern. I don't know if that's something that is a concern of council, but we have been told to consider it as part of this and that that would be helpful and instructional. You have, to my understanding, been briefed by community services about smoking in parks, specifically cigarettes, not considering marijuana at that time. The recommendation was to post playgrounds with basically a request, not a formal posting of "This is against the law," but just saying something like that sign that's over there, "Young ones lungs at play, this is a tobacco-free area," that sort of thing. That was the recommendation at that time, but that also that we may want to coordinate with marijuana legalization. And so if that's something that we want to do, work regarding this issue would also need to be coordinated with community services and police and pending your approval and So the recommendation of the administration is that we need to study and do analysis further of marijuana legalization and implications for the city of Renton. We need to make determinations for the appropriate land use designations, where those, where these things would be and how they would fit into our zoning scheme. Consider whether or not we want to adopt any additional locational criteria for those uses, what's most appropriate, whether we want to impose any other additional requirements. Do we want to do something like Issaquah with an additional license of some sort? And then consider not allowing smoking in our public parks as well is something that we would like to have referred out. So we're recommending that council adopt a moratorium on accepting business licenses for marijuana-related businesses at this time. By way of next steps, the way that you would effectuate that is by adopting a resolution that Larry referred to earlier. As part of that, I understand it sets a date for a public hearing for that moratorium. The date and the time, we always have to set a timeframe for a moratorium that's being proposed for six months, and it also directs staff to engage the public and begin on a work program in regards to how this is a best fit for the city of Renton. That's all that I have.
Okay. Well, I have a couple of comments and questions. One of them is, yeah, just for any members of the public that are watching, and also to kind of level set with the council, I think we, everything you said is correct. We haven't taken any action on this. I think we did discuss it at a council offsite notionally, where we, by definition, take no action. And I remember a desire on the part of the council at the time that, first of all, we needed to wait for the rules to come out from the state, so we didn't know what those were going to be. And then we thought that we might end up linking it to where we allow sales of liquor, you know, generally. But the only reason I mention it, and I think all that needs to be reviewed, and I don't think we really talked about the, the producer side of it, big warehouses and the zoning impacts of those. But I'm mentioning it because I wouldn't want the public to think that by doing the moratorium that we're leading towards a ban, because I don't think that's where we're going with this, so. And then the only other comment I wanted to make was, I couldn't remember exactly how tonight's meeting was announced, and can we take action? I mean, we can at the council meeting, right? I, I don't know if I, if a report out of this meeting's necessarily in order or not, but...
Well, I don't know that it's in order. It's not listed on the agenda, so there would not be a notice in general, but the way the moratorium works is there would be a public hearing scheduled within 60 days. So the public comment could be taken, and the council could then listen and determine whether the moratorium appeared to be appropriate or not.
Okay, that's, that sounds right to me.
And I don't, the draft resolution that I sent over on the moratorium, I don't think it had a date, but I think the city clerk could, or maybe already has filled in an appropriate date.
Okay.
It just seemed to me appropriate to read that resolution out tonight.
In the council meeting.
In the council meeting and get everything, get the ball started.
I think so, too.
I just think there's so many issues with this that we don't understand, that it, that to let somebody sneak up on us, and then we end up with something that isn't well-planned and well-thought-out, that it would be disastrous. Plus, you know, we're going to make so much tax dollars off this. Sorry for being facetious. This whole thing is set up so the state gets it all, and the cities get all the problems and all the enforcement, and just everything, and we don't get a penny. It just is absolutely ridiculous, in my opinion. I mean, if we're going to be, have to deal with it, we should be, get compensated for it, because this is going to be a, a real pain, because we're going to have a whole bunch of people that don't want it in their neighborhood, and I, I'm one that doesn't want it in my neighborhood, obviously. You know, and the reality is, we're going to have to do it somewheres, but we have to do it in, in such a way that we don't impact. And I noticed on this, you know, one of the things I wouldn't have thought of, that one of them have in their regulations is that the smell odor can't go outside the building. And those, and it, you know, there's some really good suggestions in here about security and surveillance and, you know, we don't want it to make it look like a prison either.
Right.
I mean, so we, that's why I'm so adamant that we need to pass a moratorium today.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I, thank you for your thoughtfulness, Chip, Angie, in putting this together, and I'm, I'm very supportive of, you know, your recommendation. I think that we owe it to our community to make sure that it's vetted, you know, in the spirit of making sure that we're looking at best practices. It's so new, there's so much that's going to evolve over time, you know? You think back on...
know, you think back on prohibition, you know, was the event of the day, and all of the experiences that were learned from that. We certainly got to have a number of unforeseen circumstances and consequences that are going to surface in different municipalities, and we certainly don't want our residents to be at the brunt of those in a negative way. So I appreciate the fact that we want to take a step back, be more cognitive in our approach, and thoughtful, and engage our residents in terms of listening at the public meeting, et cetera, and ultimately try to figure out what is best for our residents. And so I'm looking forward to that process.
Ms. Brier?
Yeah, Angie, I mean, both of you have said that there's a resolution and that there's a moratorium. There's nothing in our packets. There's no resolution, there's no committee report or anything. So this is all a surprise to me. So it would be nice to be able to read something and have some time to take a look at that before we make motions and approve things.
I will work on tracking that down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, would it be okay with you if they bring it up on the floor tonight, if they can find it?
Well, it depends on how lengthy it is. I mean, I think we need to be able to take a look at it and read it and evaluate it.
What happens if we lose a week? Nothing's going to happen.
Well, the only issue would be if we get an application in, and there'd be, you know, whether or not they within challenge the fact that they were in ahead of the moratorium. I think the idea of a moratorium, as the council recalls, we've had other instances when issues have come up, and the whole concept of a moratorium is it gives the council time to kind of take a pause. So my apologies for not getting a draft in time for the council to consider, but the process of a moratorium is to allow the council to pause, and then you come back, and during the public hearing, and that gives you time to decide, are we going to, are we going to continue the moratorium for the recommended time, or do we not think there's enough justification for that, at which time you'd remove the moratorium?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I don't really have any trouble, I don't anticipate that I would vote no against a moratorium tonight. It's just the fact that we, it's a surprise. I didn't realize that this, you know, that it was going to come up as a topic, quite like that. And, you know, we haven't seen the draft resolution.
We can tell you that, I don't know how many contacts a week that CED gets. I know I received several.
I know of at least a couple myself.
So there's, and the other point that she's touched on, however, is that there's a charade going on out there right now with dispensaries. They're not legal. People are coming in and trying to open dispensaries, and they're calling them everything from Toys R Us to, you know, let's, you know, what are the Hookah Gardens or whatever. It just is crazy what they're saying they're doing. And I think they're just trying to all get in position to get, claim the best locations for when the recreational marijuana hits. But I'm not urging you to pass the resolution tonight if you're not comfortable with it. I would slightly prefer that it had been on the agenda, but I don't think that's absolutely necessary for a moratorium when we're having a follow-up public hearing. So if you don't feel comfortable, and just one other comment, I drafted the resolution, so it's not real long.
Okay. You know, I think we should bring that tonight, and we could take a look at it, and if anybody needs more time, they can ask then, but we'll take a look at that.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Then are we setting a public hearing date after tonight? Part of the resolution.
Part of the resolution has a blank in it, the way it was drafted, so the city clerk could have, give us a date that's available. We might have to double-check and see whether that's been done, or what date is available. Geez, Merry Christmas.
Yeah. I, I really appreciate all the comments. Mr. Person, I think your comment is really astute about making sure that the production sites don't look like prisons. I could see people putting in barbed wire fences and things like that, and we don't want, we don't want to ruin the aesthetics of our neighborhoods. So, okay, good. Well, that was an interesting topic. Okay, so anything further on that before, I will talk about it again during the regular council meeting. All right. You must have other emerging issues, then?
Yeah, and just with remaining time that we have here, while Angie teases up, I just want to share with you that as the department head for Community and Economic Development, I've been really working hard the last year to maximize the productivity and the effectiveness of our staff in CED. And part of maximizing the productivity and effectiveness is just to look at how we organize ourselves and do the business that we do within our department. And so I've been working really closely with the mayor's office, with human resources, and with our finance department to create a new organizational structure. But because there are some budget implications to that, you know, I wanted to bring that in front of the council committee, the whole, for discussion. And as I indicated earlier, it will be rolled into an ordinance that Ewan will be bringing forward. But first is, is Catherine here? Oh, Catherine, why don't you come on up?
I don't have her.
So I don't want to get too far without recognizing Catherine Laird, our HR manager for the City of Renton, who I have been spending a lot of time working with through a lot of the issues that we will discuss at a very high level here tonight. But the main thing that I wanted to assure you is that the only reason that we're looking at this reorg and the changes that are being advanced is just to create the most productive, efficient organization that we can have, and maximize everything that we have within our resources at CED. The organizational chart is the new organizational chart within the department that you can see in front of you. And if you would like a hard copy, I have copies of them.
Yeah, I'm going to, it's a little hard to read on the monitor.
This has to look like a period.
So, you know, I'm just going to, again, just talk to this. We have several positions that are existing vacant positions that we are working on filling within the department. Those positions do not have any vegetary implications. However, you will note the yellow positions that are being reclassified from, conversion from a lower position up. And what we're trying to do here is organize our department so that we're going to have working supervisors or managers. And we're not asking for new managers, but we're asking for the opportunity to reclassify some positions so that we can have working supervisors and managers for each of the individual work groups that we have in the department. And those are highlighted in yellow. The real thrust of the budgetary impacts of the CED reorg is the two new positions that are in the rose color on the org chart that I wanted to highlight for the council, because that's really the key in terms of the budgetary impacts that I'll discuss in a second. We're asking for two new positions, one, a planner, and one for a development engineering plan review position. Over the course of the last year, those are the two areas where we have the greatest need within the department, and so we're requesting two new positions for that. And then finally, as we're going through the process, we were evaluating all of the positions, and there was a significant drop-off in terms of the compensation for the planner series. So working with our HR department, we're recommending reclassification of the planner series to more adequately reflect what the marketplace is for those positions. So before I flip the page here, Catherine, anything that you wanted to add to the org chart discussion?
No.
Okay. Oops. So what is this going to cost? So if you turn to the second page in the handout that I provided you, again, color-coded the same as the org chart, you can see the yellow are the new positions that are being reclassified from existing positions that we already have. And then you can see the orange positions are that series that I was just describing to you to bring us within the marketplace. And then, at the very bottom, is the rose color, the two new positions, the planner and a civil engineering three for a development engineering plan review group are the two new positions. So you can see that's where the bulk of the cost is in this. The reclassifications and recommended changes, total $83,000 and change. But the two new positions is really expensive. A new position for both of those is costing us a little over $232,000. So adding the reclassifications, as well as the two new positions, we end up with a total cost of $316,000 to affect the recommendations in the reorg. So let me go, having said that, because that's a lot of money, let me go really quickly then to how are we going to pay for this? So, actually, Catherine, anything else you want to say on this slide?
No.
All right, move forward. Okay. Oops, wrong way. So we're planning on paying for this with building permit revenue. Already this year, we have far exceeded our budget forecast with respect to revenue. We have received over $700,000 more dollars this year in budget revenue than we had planned for in our budget. It shows up here as $500,000 because our finance department is very conservative, and because the year hasn't closed yet, I'm not going to do that. But I want to tell you, we are so far ahead of schedule with respect to our budget revenue, based on the number of permit and land use planning applications we've received and processed so far this year. Secondly, we are going to build that increase in activity into the budget for next year as well. So we're planning on increasing the budget for 2014 for revenue by $600,000. That is going to more than adequately compensate for the increases that we're asking for, for the new positions and the reclassifications. I do want to note as well that a significant portion of that development engineering, civil engineer three position, is actually paid through by the utilities fund, because a little over 60% of the work done in that position is actually related to utilities work, so we have compensation for that as well. So we're trying to create an organizational structure that maximizes productivity and effectiveness, identified a couple needs, as well some needs for new positions, as well as reclassifying some positions. But we believe, based on the revenue that we have, the revenue to support those changes being requested, that'll be part of the budget when Ewan brings it forward in ordinance form here in a couple of months. So with that, Catherine, anything you want to say about that?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Dricker?
Yeah. Chip, I don't think we have it here, and I'm not positive what the goal of this meeting is, if we're making a decision point tonight. What, I would like to see what this will look like in 2008, to kind of do the layover. Because I see that you're saying you're reorganizing, but I don't know what the flow chart looked like prior. But I also then, and then the reason for that, in a sense, is that if we can, is that the old org chart?
Yeah. That's the org chart that we have today, that basically largely reflects the way the department was organized in 2008.
Okay. Because I think it's important to also note that when the economy crashed, and all of the development and everything stopped, we specifically focused cuts into this, into the planning, knowing that when things rebounded, the commitment was to refund and get it back up and running in a manner that fully supported it. So I think we've already promised you the end result here, because I think that was the agreement when we cut you. If administration begs to differ, they can, they can do that. But at the same time, I think that to have that commitment, that this also, number one, honors our commitment to you, to the division, and back, but that this also, reorganization promises an effective future in this, in the development services arena, because we have heard concerns, rightfully so, because we caused them, from the fact that we stretched you guys thin as things started to rebound. So I'm assuming, but just to have your commitment, that this new organizational chart understands what it looked like at the good times, that we have a new normal, and that this addresses the service issues we heard from constituents.
Perfectly stated, and absolutely, we are committed to doing this. I'll just put a couple numbers on the points you made. First is, CED had the biggest hit in terms of the budget. We had a 38% reduction in our budget from 2008 until now, the most recently adopted budget. At the same time, we've had over a 50% increase in service area. And what I've really focused on in the last year is really looking at our processes, our systems, and our personnel to get the maximization out of our existing resources to the extent reasonable and possible. But really looking at how we do business as well. And what I've provided for you here is a new way of doing business. But coming back to your point is, we do need additional resources here as well, and that's why I'm requesting the budget increase for the two new positions and the reclassification of some other positions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Just a question and a comment, Chip. And I, stark comparison from where you were, where you are now, to what you're proposing, it looks a lot more battles to me in terms of organizational distribution. So I appreciate that. But I've got a question in regards to, you've got about five positions here that are not filled. What's the plan for those?
Well, in fact, many of those we're out recruiting for those positions right now. So, in fact, we have three open positions that we're recruiting right now. So we're trying to get the positions that are vacant filled as quickly as possible, with one exception. And I, thank you for raising that, because this is, I know this is a sensitive issue for the council. The position we're not advertising is the code compliance position, and just because that affords us the opportunity, just not there, from my point of view, of maximizing the staffing that we have. And I only want to fill a position when I feel like we have, we are right up against it. There's really no other effective way of dealing with that issue. Right now, we are doing a lot of cross-training with staff to provide the support for code compliance, and looking at some other ways that we do business as a business model there. So I want to exhaust those opportunities before we just jump to filling the position. But with respect to the other positions, we're moving ahead with them.
And then another follow-up to that would be, with, you know, respect to people that are looking at this at home, and may not understand, you know, exactly what you're presenting here, you really, if you could just make a comment or two in terms of what this means in terms of increased productivity. You talked about working managers, or working supervisors, and cross-training, and what that all means in terms of this kind of an organizational restructuring.
Yeah, in fact, one of the things you'll note comparing the old org chart with the new one, is it's a very flat organizational chart. And what we're trying to do is organize things that we're not hierarchical, where you have to go through layers of management to make decisions, but you're actually flattening out the organizational chart and empowering staff and their immediate supervisors to make decisions quicker and sooner to the problem. So we're not going to have a vertical org, we're going to have a flat horizontal one, where everybody's going to be working together to solve the problems and serve our community.
Which could mean better service.
That's the game that we're shooting for here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And Chip, so the two new positions, civil engineer you've already touched on, they do a lot of utilities, design work, basically imagine putting in infrastructure to support the utilities and development, and widening our roads and that sort of thing. Can you explain the associate planner, what their function would be?
Yeah, their function would be basically working on land use entitlements, whether that's working on land use conditional use permits, short plats, preliminary plats, variances, working issues, land use issues through the hearing examiner process, and answering questions regarding single-family development at our front counter, in terms of what rules apply, looking at our design standards, a lot of those issues.
So a property owner comes in wondering what they can do with their property, this is somebody that would, would guide them. Okay, good. Okay. So what's the next step?
The authorization for the positions and the budget modification are included in the mid-year budget adjustment that you'll see, you would have seen last week, but you'll now see on November 18th. We'll brief you on that, and then there's a public hearing that night.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay.
Now we get to hear tolling.
Oh, yeah, tolling. Yeah, is that, are we up to tolling now?
Sideway out of here.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're actually, the agenda's, I think we have room for three chairs.
Oh, okay, okay, good.
Let you know.
Thank you. Oh, you're right. Thanks.
Okay, let me get this open. Nope, that's the wrong one. That didn't work.
Yeah, there it is.
Kind of looks like it. Okay, there we go. Okay. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Renton City Council. I am Greg Zimmerman, Renton's Public Works Administrator, and I have with me Kim Henry, Department of Transportation's I-405 Program Director, and Denise Sieri, the Program's Deputy Director. And they're here to make sure that when I start going out of my depth on this quick presentation, they get me back on the tracks again or answer any questions that you may have.
Welcome, and thank you for being here, and good luck trying to keep Greg on track.
We're happy to be here. Thank you. This will be a relatively quick presentation, just a few slides, but it'll go through a little bit of history, and then the points that we'll be talking about, as Council President Corman knows, on November seventh, there will be the fourth and final Executive Advisory Group meeting to discuss certain aspects of the I-405 project, in particular tolling and carpool policy, and also there'll be some discussion about funding options. The state would like all of the jurisdictions that participate in the Executive Advisory Group to attempt to come to a consensus on Thursday about these options. So we wanted to visit this with you and talk a little bit about the options and get ready for the meeting that's coming up this coming Thursday. The, I thought I'd start out by mentioning what the legislature had to say about express tolling. They have a set of criteria that they published in the RCW that states factors and performance criteria for express tolling. And the ones that I've highlighted here, I'm going to read because the Department of Transportation has to be very cognizant of these criteria, and whatever agreed-upon tolling approach, carpool tolling approach, is recommended to the Transportation Commission has to be able to meet these criteria. The criteria number A, whether the express toll lanes maintain speeds of forty-five miles per hour at least ninety percent of the time during peak periods, so that's one criteria. Whether the express toll lanes generate sufficient revenue to pay for all Interstate 405 express toll lane-related operating costs, that's another criteria. And the number five on the bottom is if after two years of operation of the express toll lanes on the Interstate 405 performance measures listed in A and E above are not being met, the express toll lane project must be terminated as soon as practicable. So those criteria are really important. Just as a quick reminder, the Bellevue, the Renton to Bellevue portion of the I-405 corridor, what's currently proposed, as you know, is retaining the two existing general purpose lanes, converting the HOV lane to an HOT or High Occupancy Transit Lane, an express, or High Occupancy Toll Lane, an express toll lane, and then adding a second HOT lane. So there'll be an additional lane northbound and additional lane southbound that will be these HOT lanes. So this discussion that's going to be taking place on November seventh is about how to do the carpool tolling and what the recommendation is from the jurisdictions adjacent to the This slide, it's got a lot of information on it, but the portion that we're talking about of the project is this Phase Two portion that's shown here in green, I've got the prompt on it, extends from the interchange at 405 and State Route 167, which we call the Direct Connector Interchange, north up into Bellevue. So that's the portion of the project that we're focusing on right now. And you can see by the timeline on the bottom of this slide, the intention, should the legislature come up with a revenue package that supports this project, would be to construct it between the years of 2016 and 2021. This is a real important graph, and I'm going to go over it briefly and come back to it because I want to make sure we go over the other eight or so slides before we come back to it. But one of Renton's main concerns about the project is to make sure that once the project is built, the corridor, particularly the general purpose lanes, the traffic moves through Renton, so we can avoid all of the bypass traffic that when it queues up and stops moving, gets off on our surface streets, such as Lake Washington Boulevard and other surface streets, and clogs up the surface streets. So one of the main items of interest to Renton is to make sure that this project that's being proposed moves the traffic through Renton on I-405 and alleviates that problem of bypass traffic. The state has looked at the area between, on 405 between State Route 169 and Northeast Forty-Fourth Street, that's what this bar chart's about, and they're going to explain what the study, what the modeling has shown about the movement of traffic once this project is built. I'll come back to this, and Kim and Denise will discuss their findings on it in just a minute. The carpool policy decision timeline, 2008 State Route 167 hot lane pilot project was put into effect, 2015, the Bellevue to Linwood express toll lanes will open, 2022, if we get a revenue package from the state legislature, the Renton to Bellevue express toll lanes, State Route 167 Direct Connector construction would be complete by that year. And then in that same year, 2022, the forty-mile express toll lane system would be operating fourteen years after that first pilot project in 2008. So that's the overall general timeline. Of course, it's dependent on a revenue package that will support these projects. This is a slide that shows the four options that are going to be discussed next Thursday at the Executive Advisory Group. Option number A would have the two new hot lanes, the two new toll lanes, be free for anybody that had two or more occupants in the vehicle. The second option, option B, would have the people with, or vehicles with three or more people in it would be free, but people with, or vehicles with two people in it would get either a one-dollar discount from the toll or a fifty-cent discount from the toll. There were sort of two sub-options about this carpool discount option. Option three is a hybrid that's called the peak three free, off-peak free. So what that means is three or more people in a vehicle would not have to pay the toll, two or more people in the vehicle would not have to pay a toll if they're traveling in the hot lanes off the AM and PM peak. If they were traveling on the peak, they'd have to pay the toll. So it's kind of a mixture option for two-plus occupants. And then the fourth option is a straight three-plus option, where the only ones that are able to use the hot lanes without paying a toll are vehicles with three or more people in it. So those are the four options.
So, can I clarify, just one point on the carpool discount? The carpool definition is unchanged from what it is today, it just remains at two-plus. And so if you're a two-plus carpool, three-plus carpool, or a four-plus carpool, it doesn't really matter how many people are in the carpool, but then that carpool does receive a discount of either fifty cents or a dollar, just, which is, so there won't necessarily be a free trip, but there's a discount for all carpools. Now, the other thing to know, remember those criteria from the legislature that I started off the presentation with? The modeling shows that option A does not meet those criteria, either in terms of how much revenue is generated or in terms of keeping the speed limit in the hot lanes above forty-five miles an hour ninety percent of the time. So option A is not considered by the state to be a viable option. Option B, the one-dollar discount, again, is not a viable option according to those criteria. I understand that the fifty-cent discount would still be a viable option. And C and D are viable options by the projections. Both of those would meet the revenue needs and also the forty-five mile an hour criteria in the state law for express toll lanes. So that's something to keep in mind in terms of this study. Essentially, option A really is not an option that they can go forward with. Another thing that's being discussed is three different funding levels for the project. This funding level that I'm showing between, the improvements between Renton and Bellevue, including the Direct Connector project at the interchange, 167 and I-405, is a one-point-eight billion-dollar funding level. If the legislature granted that level of funding for this project, tolls would not be needed for this Phase Two. The funding from the gas tax and associate funding would be enough. So any tolls collected from the hot lanes would be able to be used for future phases of the I-405 project under this high funding level. Uh-oh. There we go.
I skipped one.
There we go. The medium funding level is nine-hundred-and-sixty million dollars. With this funding level, two-hundred-and-fifteen million would be needed from toll revenue in order to build the project, and the other nine-hundred-and-sixty million would come from the gas tax, the legislative package. And so that's, that's kind of a medium funding level between the two extremes. The third funding level is the low funding level. This one would be a six-hundred-and-seventy-five million-dollar funding level that would require five-hundred million revenue from tolls from the hot lanes. And I believe this was the, was this the option that was in the House package?
Yes, it was.
The House of Representative package that didn't obviously pass, but this was the revenue level for this project that was in that package. So a little more than half of it would be paid for through gas tax, and then the five-hundred million would be needed from the toll revenues from that package. I've heard the interests and concerns from Renton's policymakers, and I wanted to go through the interests and concerns as I've heard them, some of which were brought up by Council President Corman at the third advisory group meeting. And certainly at this point, I want to make sure that these are in fact representative of the interests of the council on this phase of the project. First, I-405 throughput in Renton removes bypass traffic on Renton surface streets. We're going to come back to that slide that shows the projections, if we build this project, if the state builds the project, what's going to happen to the speed of traffic going through northbound 405 during rush hour? So they've got some information on that compared to what's happening now, what they observed. So we'll get back to that issue. Obviously, the faster that traffic moves, the higher the speed limit, the less bypass traffic because people won't have incentive to get off the freeway to go on our surface streets because they're moving faster. So that's a very important aspect. Second bullet, I-405 State Route 167 Direct Connector interchange improvements must be built at the front end of Phase Two. Can't be delayed, it's got to be one of the first projects out the gate. I think we've heard that loud and clear. Thirdly is linked to that, concern that the three-plus hot lane option that we've talked about, where in order to avoid paying tolls, you have to have at least three occupants in the vehicle, southbound won't work unless the Direct Connector is built up front. So that has to be, another reason why that project has to be a front-end project. Concern that replacement of the HOV lane with three-plus hot lane will be seen as a loss by the public because right now they've got the HOV lane, it's not a toll lane. If you have two or more people in it, you can use it and you don't have to pay tolls. It gets converted into an HOT lane. So unless general purpose traffic moves much better so that you have an option to get through the city without using that toll lane, it may not be well received by the public. Oh, whoops. At worst case, the two-plus off-peak free option, that option number C that we were talking about, where during the peak hours, the only ones that don't pay toll is if you have three or more occupants, but if you're in the off-peak hours, two-plus don't pay toll. That could be an option that could be considered, but we still can't assure there'd be public acceptance of that option for some of the reasons we talked about, the HOV lane and so forth. And then concern about the proposal of a mandatory transponder being required by people using the corridor. So those were some, those were some issues and some concerns that I heard from you, the policymakers. There may be others that I didn't cover, but I wanted to make sure that, you know, obviously that's, what's essential here is what your input into this, this meeting on November seventh is going to be.
You've done a good job of capturing it. A couple of clarifications I wanted to make is, one of them that became clear is off-peak actually, it starts pretty late. I think they're saying it'd be eight PM. So, you know, like at the...
Seven.
So, yes, now it's seven, and I think they're saying that it's got to be more like eight. So, you know, the typical mom taking their children to an event or something is probably not going to still be able to use this necessarily. And then the other one I just wanted to clarify, the mandatory transponder, I brought this up, you know, as the council knows, I've been a member of the 405 Executive Committee for many years now, more than a decade. And so I've seen different, you know, probably the technology's changing, and I've seen different variations of it. I remember Rob McKenna was a co-chair of this committee at one point and was talking about the technology that would be used, but at one point, and I don't remember how it exactly is being proposed now, but there was an idea that with these hot lanes that you'd have two, everywhere that you enter the hot lane, it wouldn't be like now where you're just shifting in and out of the lane, but where you'd have an entry, you'd have one that you'd drive down if you have a transponder and you're going to pay, and you'd have a parallel entrance that you'd go down if you're two or more in a carpool. And the idea is somebody could be sitting in a booth, highway patrol, or they could flag the highway patrol if you don't really have a carpool when you go down that one. The transponder one, they charge you. But some of the more recent proposals here, you'd have to have a transponder no matter what, which unfortunately really changes the complexion of it because you couldn't just have an, you know, an instantaneous carpool. Like if you haven't pre-registered and thought it out and planned it, you can't just go, hey, why don't you guys come along with me and we'll hop in the carpool lane? Because you don't have the transponder and you don't have the registered carpool. So I thought, I wasn't really keen on the fact that you lose a lot of potential for carpooling. In fact, it seemed like a lot of the proposals just, the incentives for carpooling sort of fade away in favor of, you know, paying for the lane. So that was kind of what to clarify.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, can you tell us what the hours, when you talk about peak, would be, since now we're hearing that it's different, would be different?
So when we were looking at the peak hours, it's important to understand that we were doing a study, and so the final hours still have to be set by the West State Transportation Commission. And so they will make a final decision based on input from this committee and from Department of Transportation and additional analysis. The AM peak was five AM to ten AM, and then, so that would be the three-plus time period. And then the PM, or the midday off-peak where two-plus carpools could use facility would then be from ten until three, three, and then from three until eight would be three-plus again. And then in the evening hours, presumably it would return to two-plus. So those are still issues that will have to be worked through with the Transportation Commission.
Thank you.
One of the things that, since this question came up about mandatory transponders that I just might talk about here for a minute, one of the things that the department has decided that we want to do is use photo tolling, which means anybody who chooses to use it can use it, and we'll be able to take picture of the license plate. If you don't have a transponder, then you'll be able to still go ahead and use facility, you'll get that bill in the mail just like you do on Highway 521. One of the things we're trying to do is get consistent operations with all of the systems, so whatever rules apply in one place also will apply somewhere else. But in addition to the transponder that we have already started, I mean, we have been using on Highway 167, we use on the rest facilities, we are also looking at applications where you can register online through a smartphone application or through your computer before you leave work, and you can say, I'm going to be using facility, and I'm going to be a carpool, and so I want to register. That is something we're working through. It's not quite on the same timeline probably here, but it's something that we recognize is probably the future here on how we're going to be able to let people use facilities in different ways. Okay, at the executive...
At the Executive Advisory Group meeting, the fourth and final meeting this Thursday, again, what's going to be discussed is the carpool policy. What do you think of the two viable scenarios? There's actually three, if you include the 50 cent discount scenario, but the hybrid we talked about, and then just the across-the-board Peak Three Plus. Can we work toward consensus? So that's going to be the goal of the meeting, is to try to get a regional consensus. And then funding and phasing, what do you think about the funding packages? Just heard from Doug Levy, he gave us a note that, that current proposals being negotiated, I think by members of the legislature, is the middle package, the $960 million package, not the high, not the low, but the middle package, which is a healthy funding package. I think that that's, I think that it would be a pretty good, pretty good alternative if that's what came out of the legislative process.
Yeah, I think in the last session, the House passed the $675 million with an assumption there was going to be $500 million in bonds to complete the project and build the entire package. The Senate did put out a list that never went anywhere, and it had the higher package, higher amount for gas taxes. And what it sounds like is that they're meeting in the middle between those two different packages, and, but I think there's still a little bit of work before they are final with their work.
And this is just a little bit of a timeline. There's a recommendation due after this fourth meeting from the Department of Transportation to the Washington State Transportation Commission, who then begins a rate-setting process for the tolls. The Department of Transportation delivers funding and phasing report to the legislature and governor by December of this year. And then the Bellevue to Lynwood Express toll lanes' projected opening is December 2015. So there's a couple of where-tos from here after the Thursday meeting, and I think it goes to the State Transportation Commission at that point, the recommendation. I'd like to go back to that real important slide about the vehicle throughput and maybe turn it over for a minute to Department of Transportation, Kim and Denise, to elaborate on what that graph means because that's an important one.
So I think that, so we had understood that there was a question as to, once the lane opens, what would be the benefit? What I did is had staff go back to 2012 to get a better understanding of, at two data points that we have on the freeway, very easy to collect the data. So for all of 2012, in the AM peak two-hour, it's the average volumes for those two data collection sites at 169 and 44th. So looking at that, what we have today is approximately 5,000 vehicles are the throughput during that time period. And in the GP lanes, and I know that there's slower parts of that area, but in those two data stations, the average GP speeds are at 38 miles per hour. And in the HOV lane, it's running about 45. If we project that forward, then, what we're finding from modeling is that, leaving the two-plus HOV exactly as it is today, but just projecting traffic as it grows in the next few years, the speeds would continue to drop, no surprise, and it's projected to be about 25 if we were to do nothing, and the HOV speeds also would drop. Looking at, if we were to take that then and turn it into the same three lanes, but taking that HOV lane and going from a two-plus to a three-plus, it worsens things. It doesn't help things out because obviously that's a HOV lane that's running full already. Looking at, then, if we were to build the express toll lanes, open it up in 2022, you can basically take that second bar and that last bar and basically say, here's a with and without in comparison. And looking at the width, obviously, we're building a whole nother lane of capacity, so you're going to be able to get a throughput of significantly better than you have today. So the throughput is running at about, over probably 675, 6,750. So at that point, though, because there is quite a lot more capacity in that express toll lane, because you've got the two lanes, we're able to manage that traffic flow to make sure that the speeds stay at over 45, preferably at 60 miles an hour. We would be able to get a throughput increase of about 2,900. And it's because of that ability to keep those, that single lane running at its fullest capacity that we're able to get quite a lot more throughput. The benefit to the GP is that so many folks have moved into that based on trying to keep the price as low as possible but fill up the lanes as much as possible, is an improvement of speeds between 25, the jump is expected to be about 42. So there would be a benefit to the general purposes expected as well as the HOV, or the express toll lanes. And what studies that we've done nationally to look at, a lot of the hot lanes nationally are more like 167 in some of the early projects where they've taken a single HOV lane, turned it into a hot lane, no new capacity added. So you only see a smaller marginal improvement. When you add a whole new lane of capacity, I've seen studies that show very similar improvements. And again, it's because you've added a lane of capacity, managed two of them at their highest peak, allowing for that greater throughput and speed.
So that really concludes the presentation portion, and I know that there's going to be, obviously, the discussion on Thursday, and they will be making an effort to come to a regional consensus on the carpool policy, the two-plus, three-plus policy. So we wanted to bring you all up to date with what was on the table, and I think that this, this analysis of speed limits and throughput was very helpful for me in terms of seeing that, as Councilman Corman mentioned at the last TAG meeting, the original concept was a much larger expansion than it is now. And we did have a little bit of concern with the fact that one new lane is being added in each direction, and that being an HOT lane, what would that do if it alleviated the health throughput situation? So this gives us some more information along those lines, so it's pretty helpful.
Sure.
Okay, we're talking about the Renton to Bellevue section. The Bellevue to Lynwood section will have been open for approximately seven years at that time. Are they the same? Or when you get to Bellevue, does it change the cost or three-plus, two-plus, the hours and so on?
So one of the things that's really important here that we want to make sure is that we have consistent operations throughout the corridor. And so as you travel from 167 onto 405, the rules are clear and consistent, and as you travel through Bellevue further north, that same thing applies. So we will need to reach a conclusion here on what is we're going to do this year so that we're able to open that north end in 2015 and make sure that we have those operations ready to go and that it works in the way that really makes sense for us. I think the way we have laid this out, there will be sections. We cannot say that for, when we have a 40-mile system, that it's a continuous system, that at one end of the system, we can guarantee what the conditions are going to be like after you've traveled 30 or 40 miles. And so the freeway's actually then broken up into some different zones. And as you travel from the very south end of 167 and you get to 405, then you will need to make some decisions about your trip and whether you want to continue in the express toll lanes or not. As you travel from then, that interchange at 405, 167 up to Bellevue, once again, you'll need to make a decision about, now that I've hit downtown Bellevue and traffic conditions are different, do I want to continue in the express toll lanes or not? But in terms of carpool operations, yes, we need the same rules to apply. One of the things we heard, we did have focus groups, and through those focus groups, we heard over and over again from folks is that we don't want to be thinking about different rules as we travel from freeway to freeway or one part of the freeway to another part of the freeway. We just need those rules and operations to be consistent so we don't have to think about, gee, what freeway am I on and what are the rules for this particular freeway?
Exactly.
But I don't know that they've necessarily answered. I think the decision hasn't been made yet on that, that upper section, right? The three-person versus two-person carpool.
No, that's correct. That's what we're trying to get out of our committee.
That's, yeah, so this committee's deciding, yeah.
Okay. So really, you're addressing from Renton to Lynwood?
Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, there was concern on this, the executive committee, that the folks are seeing that construction and that they may not realize that their two-person carpools are going to get bumped out of it. We don't know. And I just wanted to clarify, I mean, I've, I've supported managed lanes, the concept of a managed lane. We're looking at this, this graph that's still up and the bar, that you can get more throughput, you can keep two of the lanes at 60 miles per hour if you, if you build an extra lane and you manage it with variable pricing. I think the biggest question, though, and this is the one, I still haven't got my head around it, is, you know, I still, like, am of the belief that if we added another carpool lane and we did a direct connection to, to 167, that, that new pair of carpool lanes would move pretty smoothly and keep a pretty good speed. The state is saying, no, that won't happen, that, that it will bog down and slow down and not be able to keep, you know, good throughput because there will be apparently two lanes of carpoolers, and even with the direct connection to 167, they'll overwhelm it. So that's what this, this claim is. Therefore, you have to, because it'll be overwhelmed, it will not be able to keep top speed, and so we have to move to where we're making it a three-person carpool and then just filling the extra with people that are paying. I'm having a hard time imagining that, and if I could just be the dictator for a day, I would say, well, let's build the lane, open it up to the carpoolers, let the carpoolers see that the throughput drops off to nothing, that there's too many of them, and at that point, maybe go in and say, okay, we're going to have to start charging carpoolers because there's too many carpools. I'm fearful that we'll build this extra lane, and then what will happen is, some people will have the means to pay for the lane and they'll hop in it, and the carpooler that yesterday was able to use it will now watch as somebody in a single occupancy vehicle passes them up. And that would be okay if the lane was totally paid for by private money, but it's not. I mean, it's still 80% paid for by taxpayers, by all of us. So, so that's, that's kind of what the issue is. And you get into timeframes because right after it's built, it may not be filled with carpoolers, but then it will be maybe later, so all those things are in play.
We've got five minutes.
Can I address your concern there for? And, and I think that if we built two lanes and we had two lanes the entire length of facility, we wouldn't overfill the facility. But it's also part of the concern that we've heard from folks about, they want the same rules to apply throughout the entire facility. And so the place where we really have the challenge is where we only have a single lane. And so we will only have a single lane on 405 in the north end between Highway 522 and Lynwood. And then we're also only going to have a single lane on the 167 portion of the facility. And so when you look at the entire 40 miles and think about, how do we provide a carpool rule and definition that gives us consistent use throughout the length of the facility? That's where we get challenged. And so that's what we were really trying to show in this particular slide. It's, it's not the performance in the two-lane section, it's the performance in the one-lane section that really is constraining our ability to make some of those choices.
Okay. Very good. Any final comments by councilmembers?
We've got about three minutes.
All right. Thank you very much for that briefing. With that, the committee of the whole is adjourned. We'll get together in about three or four minutes with council.